Okay, Jean, I do believe we are ready to call the meeting to order.
All right, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it is a country, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, or all.
So at this point, Jean, I, we need to approve the agenda. I recommend the board accept, I'm sorry, in the wrong section already, a motion to approve the agenda as presented. There are no additional items. Jean, if you can move us through the action item?
I would like you to approve the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
First, we need a motion. John moves it?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed?
Any opposed?
And the motion carries. And next, we would need a motion.
I don't have the agenda.
Okay, I can, I can project it as we go, but right now, we're moving into the Audit Committee. And we would need, go ahead, a motion to move into the Audit, to convene the Audit Committee?
I need a motion?
I'm on it.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? We're now in the Audit Committee.
Great, I'd like to welcome Mark Bobette, Certified Public Accountant from Questar Three BOSI's. And he's here to discuss the findings of our internal audit. Welcome, Mark. Thanks for, for all of your work and for preparing tonight's report.
Thank you. Very good. So I'll ask everyone to turn to the audit report. There's two reports, the audit and the risk assessment. So if you would turn to the audit report. The audit report begins, as it usually does, with a letter from me to you. It's no different than the letter you see every year. It's dated December 6th, which was the last day that I was actually doing fieldwork on this audit. If you see after that, there's a page that's different than a page you've seen in the past. It's the page with the, the colored ovals. And this is a summary that we developed this summer. Just to give you an overview of the audit as a whole, you'll see that this audit contains six observations. And you see a relative rating there over on the right with the, with the colored ovals. That relative rating is relative to other findings as far as the topic of this audit, which is, of course, the extra classroom activities that you asked me to audit last year. So if you'll move on to page one, you'll see the names of the people in the districts that I spoke to and worked with during the course of the audit. The ECAF audit in general, all of our findings are based on the New York State pamphlet that the state updates every three or four years. That gives guidance on how to conduct activities in the clubs. The guidance was last updated in 2018, and all of our testing is based on that guidance. So for that, we decided, based on the time when we were in the BOSI's to do this, the best period to study for this was November 1st, 2018, through October 31st, 2019. So you'll see in the scope of work there that we selected a sample of 30 cash receipts to study and 30 cash dispersments to study from that year. Our objectives were to evaluate the activities to ensure they are administered in accordance with the Board of Education policies and the regulations as the Commissioner of Education, to evaluate the process and the applicable internal controls to ensure they are operating efficiently and effectively, and to ensure that the ECAF assets and records are properly made. Now, during the course of the audit, we noted that you have a number of controls in place over the processes, and I will read through those quickly, starting with the first bullet, that the Extracurricular Accounts Treasurer, Assistant Treasurer of Extracurricular Accounts, Extra Class Faculty Auditor, Extra Class Faculty Counselors, and Extra Class Faculty Advisors are all approved, Board. Also, the BOSI's requires the completion of a payment order to be submitted to the Extracurricular Central Treasurer for each dispersment transaction. This document is required to be signed by the Activity Advisor and Student Treasurer. If you turn to page two, the BOSI's requires the completion of a receipt ticket to be submitted to the Extra Classroom Central Treasurer for each submission of funds. This document is required to be signed by the Activity Advisor and Student Treasurer. All dispersments made from the ECAF are processed through the BOSI's, through the Regular Accounts Payable System, and are reviewed just like anything else by the, by the BOSI's Claims Auditor. We do the accounting for the ECAF through the Wincap system, the same accounting system we use for general activity. And the Central Treasurer provides each club with a month-end reconciliation. Each club is instructed to review, sign, and return their reconciliations every month. Questions on the controls? Very good. So there's a paragraph here I just want to read for you, something we discussed when I was out there in December. And that was that during discussion with our staff, it was indicated that we had three clubs that had taken in funds during the past year on at least one occasion where they had not recorded the receipt and not deposited it with such treasurer. In at least two of these instances, the club had paid for an expense with the cash from the receipt. Now, we subsequently sent a memo advising the clubs that this was not an acceptable practice. And when we get to the risk assessment in a minute, you'll see that this was an item that was outstanding in the risk assessment, and I've now cleared it because we are now, I've been convinced that this activity is no longer going on. This has been corrected. So the first observation we have is that we do not have a policy in place to govern the operation of extracurricular activity funds. Now, please note that I believe you have corrective action plan available to you. The BOSI's has created a corrective action plan for each of these observations, so I will ask you to refer to that. And we are anticipating that there will be a first reading for you by March 2021. Any questions on Observation One?
No.
Very good. Observation Two. So when we sampled the 30 cash receipts, we noted the following things. One of the receipts, one of the 30 receipts did not use the standard ticket that we use, so the other 29 did have that. Fifteen receipts did not have a completed profit and loss statement associated with them. Out of the 20 receipts where we expected to see one. Sixteen receipts did not have adequate backup. Again, that's adequate backup according to the pamphlet from New York State. Among these were five donations, two receipts from prom proceeds, and nine others that should have had either a list of attendees or a list of items sold. Nine of the receipts were not deposited in a timely manner. In all instances, the delay was from the time the funds were received by the club to when they were delivered to the Central Treasurer. So be aware, the delay was not because the Central Treasurer was holding it, not taking the bank. It was between the, the actual club and, and the treasurer. There was one instance where the delay was over four and a half months when a faculty advisor was out on leave. We also had a receipt for $700 for auto body repairs performed by the club that should have had sales tax billed and collected, however, it was not. Additionally, the amount of that, the club invoice for that repair was actually $754.10. There was no indication in the accounting records why the remaining $54.10 was never paid. But again, the receipt was for $700, and even though it had been several months prior, that was still the condition of it when I was in the BOSI's. And you'll see that, you know, I refer you again after each observation to the corrective action plan. Is there any question on Observation Two? Very good. So we also took a sample of 30 dispersments. For 25 of the dispersments, there was no evidence that the decision to incur an obligation or to expend funds was actually approved by the club through documentation. Now, the state pamphlet does recommend that anytime the club makes decisions like spending funds, they should, you know, have a meeting, vote on it, and document that. Also, three dispersments where the purchasing club should have paid New York State sales tax in accordance with sales tax regulations, but did not. There was one dispersment where a reimbursement to an advisor for paid expenses needed to be shorted by $47.25. And the reason for this was the, the, the club was out of money at this point. As at the end of our, date at the end of our fieldwork, that amount was still unpaid. Any questions on Observation Three? Be aware that, you know, those are, those are observations we tested. The 30 dispersments for a lot of different things, so these are really only a few items. I tested for many attributes. Observation Four. The receipt documents that are used by the clubs are not prenumbered. Use of prenumbered receipts is an important tool in understanding that all receipts have been accounted for. And you'll see that the BOSI's now plans to have prenumbered receipts in operation by January 2021. Any question on that?
No.
Very good. Then to page four. The staff indicated that clubs are required to obtain approval for fundraising activities from the Extra Class Faculty Counselors. We don't, we hadn't been using a standard form to obtain these approvals. The Central Treasurer does not maintain a file of approved fundraisers, and, and she was not aware of any documentation that may exist for these. So again, the corrective action plan, we're going to create a formal process for these approvals, and we expect that implementation to take place by January 2021. Any question on number five? But last observation, the BOSI's does not have a process to evaluate the accuracy and completeness of records that are maintained by each club. The State Education Department's pamphlet states, "The Faculty Advisor will call in the ledgers kept by the Student Activity Treasurer at least twice a year and on a rotating basis in order to compare the balances shown in the Central Treasurer's report with the balance in the Student Activity Treasurer." This is a common practice. In fact, here at, here at Questar, my department does this for Questar. In fact, one year I did it myself. I now have another associate that does it, but we call in the binders once a year, at least, and actually, we do it twice usually. And we just make sure that the balance that Central Treasurer has equals the balance the clubs have. And if there's any discrepancies, we ask them to work it out, and we, we figure out why. Any question on Observation Six? Anything else on the audit report before we move to the risk assessment? Very good, thank you. All right. So the risk assessment report, the risk assessment, a little unusual this year. Because it was done in May, as it often is, it was done via telephone. Obviously, I could not meet with the people in person like I usually do. I don't think that really affected it that much. I think everyone was cooperative, helpful, and I got most of the information I needed. I do prefer to do these in person when I can, but obviously, that was not something we could, we could pull off last year. So the report, again, starts with a letter to you. So I'll ask you to move forward to the page one, which is titled Inherent Risk Areas. And this, this page has basic standard language, things that are inherently risky in the BOSI's that are true for all BOSI's. You will see in the bottom box that there is a list of prior audits, and so that gives you some idea of what we've done in the past and maybe a guide for what you might want to have done in the future. If you'll move to page two then, there's the assessment of risk, and you see the prior year and current year categories. There hasn't been much change in those for this year. I, I, I did make a small change down toward the bottom in budgeting. I moved it from low to, low to moderate, and I, although I don't believe that the effect of what's been going on in the state regarding funding and stuff is as serious or drastic for BOSI's, I, I am not really comfortable having the lowest rating of all for anybody's budgeting this year because there's so many uncertainties these days. It's, it's, you know, it's, it's a challenging thing. So I, I did raise it a hair, but it's still a very low rating overall. And, yeah, I know the recent audit for Extra Classroom, overall, we did not change that rating. It was moderate before. After, after the audit, we think it's moderate as well. As we see implementation of the corrective action plans, we may move that to a lower, a lower risk. So if you'll turn to page three, page three begins a section of where there's items in the past that have not been resolved yet. Now, I'm not going to read through each of those in the interest of time. If anyone has any questions for me on those, I'll be glad to answer them when we're completed. So if you move to page six, there are two items that we identified in the current year that I'd like to go over. So the first one, titled Accounts Payable Cash Receipts. During the third week of March 2020, most of the staff at the business office began working remotely. Some of the BOSI's documented reviews that the BOSI's had in place needed to be altered during this period. Also, some separation of duties that normally take place have been interrupted. Now, be aware, I consider the BOSI to have a good deal of accounting checks and balances in place, and the internal controls are generally high. All I'm pointing out here is, these were slightly compromised during this period, and that was unavoidable. And I've been discussing with the staff, and I'm assured that we're doing mitigated controls where we can. Any questions on that? Very good. The next one is just that the Claims Auditor is fairly new and has not had any formal training yet, so I do recommend that some training take place. I have done training of your Claims Auditors in the past, so if the, if the BOSI's wishes me to do the same, just reach out to me, and I can do it when I'm in, in December or whatever this year. I'll be glad to do that. Any question on that? Very good. And starting on page seven is the Cleared Items, and there may be a few less items that got cleared new this year than usual just because of the COVID situation and the, the conversations we had being over the phone, and it may be less developed than, than normal. But I will ask you to turn your attention to page 12. And on page 12, you'll see that regarding the Extra Classroom that we just talked about, I, I put it here in the middle of the page, on page 12 over on the right, "A notification was sent to all clubs reinforcing the policy of recording all transactions in appropriate manner, and the Faculty Auditor has indicated that there have been no instances of this occurring in the 1920 school year." So that one item that was the, in the additional information in the audit that we talked about, that has been rectified. So if you'll move along to page 14. On page 14, you'll see that regarding this item that has been out there for many years, the Transportation Garage, you know, there was always discussion about, there were some uninventoried assets that were up there on the second floor that we had never done anything with. But after a more extensive conversation this year, it was pretty clear to me that there's really no value in those anyway. They're very obsolete. They, they would not be of value on any of the buses currently or anything like that. So really, the reason for this item being on the list is no longer valid. So, I mean, all it is is a housekeeping issue at this point. If, if, if you need that space or something, you might need it out, but I don't think there's any assets at risk right now by those being up there. Any questions on that or anything else in the risk assessment? Super. As always, the staff was very cooperative, and like I said, you know, it wasn't, it was a little different this year, but I appreciated everyone's time, and everyone made their appointments and was helpful, so I appreciate that very much.
Well, thank you, Mark, and thank you to Kathy and her, her staff for being prepared for you when you came in. And if there are no further questions, we would move on to the internal audit focus area for next year. Or for this coming year to select an area for selection, and Kathy had some, some thoughts on, on a particular area that, that we could focus on for the, the next area of focus.
So we have had turnover in our technology department recently, and so we felt like having a focus area of the inventory tracking in our technology department and reviewing that would be something important for us to do. We use that inventory and the tracking as part of how we allocate out the costs for our technology support throughout the organization. So it is a critical piece for us, so that, that's what we felt would be a good area to look at this year.
That's just an item for, for discussion. Any comments from, from the board? Take care of making sure our, our asset tagging is, is accurate.
Are there any other areas that you want to add at a different time, Kathy?
We can certainly look at, you know, we, we choose a different area every year, so it depends on the circumstance on, on where we are each year. So this is what we felt would be the most appropriate at, at the current time.
Thank you.
It, it addresses a potential area of, of weakness, frankly, with, with the transitions that, that we've had. So I think it ensures that, that we, we put everything in place that needs to be in place and ensure that we move forward in the, in the most responsible and appropriately way. If there is no further discussion, we can move out of the Audit Committee if we can have a motion to.
I'd like a motion that we move out of the Audit Committee.
Yeah. Jean, can I just make a quick comment before we leave?
Go ahead.
Sure.
So the, the two reports that I presented tonight, I will append the, the corrective action plans to them, take the watermark of draft off the report, sign it, and, and send a final report probably as soon as tomorrow. And as far as the, the focus area for the new audit, I will commence that audit. I will be on site on, starting on, on December 7th, just so you know. All right?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
Have a good night, everybody.
You too.
I'd like to move us, the Audit Committee back to our regular meeting. All in favor of doing that?
I would make, make the motion.
I'll make it as a motion. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
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 Opposed? All in favor? Excuse me, let's move back to the regular meeting then. We need to get the agenda, please.
Okay, so, Jean, I, I recommend that the Board approve the Board Minutes for the September 30th, 2020, regular Board Meeting. All you need to do is solicit, solicit a motion and a second, and then take the vote.
All right, we need a motion to approve that. All in favor?
Aye.
We have a motion. I'll second it.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I don't have the agenda here to look at, so would you put it back up, please?
Yeah, we just need to look at one another when we vote, but I can, I can go ahead and share that. So we're right here with Board Minutes. Okay, so did we have a, a motion and a second?
Yes.
Kristina? Okay, and we voted. Okay. Next, I'm going to shift into, into my slides, which will guide the next few sections. Should be, should be a little simpler as we move, move through the meeting. One second. And we will start with the Assistant Superintendent for Student Programs and his report. Turn it over to you, Jay.
Good evening, everyone. So similar to last month, I'm very proud to say and pleased to say that our teachers, our staff have done a great job continuing a sense of normalcy during these times, and I just would like to highlight a few of the programs and activities that, that they're engaged in currently. October is National Bullying Prevention Month, so both Stacy Barzullo's teams and Dan Salvani's team at McNabb, Stacy at Mayfield and Knox, they've engaged in various activities regarding bullying prevention. In particular, with Stacy's teams at Mayfield and Knox, they have been working hard to teach students how to identify bullying and what they see or experience in that. They've created some activities to promote kindness, and they've been creating, sharing pictures and kind words with their peers. Stacy's group has also celebrated Unity Day on October 21st, where everyone was asked to wear orange and unite in pledging kindness and to stand up against bullying. Dan's team, they created Kindness Book, where each student identified and created pictures and sentences on what kindness means to them. The book will be created with their work for keepsake in the future and for others to see. They've also recreated fall activities in-house, simulated pumpkin patches, and they're also having a Halloween parade, which will have parents in cars as spectators, so they'll follow appropriate protocols for that at Dan's school at McNabb. In CTE, Mike DeMeza and Riley O'Malley, they were working on starting, which is hard to believe already, starting the program presentations to our component school districts that actually begins next week. So that will, that too will look different. They have created a subcommittee of, of staff to determine how they might proceed differently this year with those presentations and visitations by prospective students to the campus. Also, I just would like to make a comment about the, the extraordinary work that our school nurses have done over the past two months. They really have worked closely with their building administrators to ensure that we're following proper Department of Health protocols. When you, when you consider our three counties, we take into account each of their protocols to ensure we're in, in compliance. Dave Laurie and I met virtually with our nurses last Thursday to review the updated guidance. As we know, there are modifications that occur occasionally, so we want to make sure that we are, we are adhering to them. So our school nurses, they truly are on the front lines, and we're grateful for their work. They have been very responsive in, in communicating with, with Lori as COVID coordinator whenever situations arise. And they've also been very collaborative and communicative with, with their families as well. So very, very thankful for the job that our school nurses have done. If anybody has any questions or comments?
Thank you, Jay. And I guess I would, I would echo Jay's comments about, about the nurses and about his efforts and Lori's efforts. None of this is, is clean and cookie cutter, and there are areas of responsibility, frankly, that intersect. Lori is our, our COVID coordinator, and it's changed her life dramatically. Yet Jay oversees our four school programs, where the people Lori is, is having to communicate with on, on a regular base spend their, their days. And, you know, he, he mentioned that the three of us met And, you know, he, he mentioned that the three of us met with the nurses. We know sometimes it just makes sense for, for a number of people to, to pitch in and work together and make sure the message gets out. We wanted to be sure that we, we communicated to our nurses that we, we know that this is, this is a different type of job than maybe they, they had signed up for. So they've done, they've done a great job and as have Jay and Laurie, and Laurie really has, has tightened up our processes with, with the COVID protocols. There are some differences between the different counties. She talks every day with the Department of Health liaisons to, to the schools. But what we've arrived at was, was we, we felt like it's best to funnel information through one person to the Department of Health, at least when the initial reports come. And Laurie drew that job and she's, she's, she's done a good job with it. I don't know that it's, it's what she wanted to administration to do, but, but I'd like to thank her before I turn it over to her. And also just, you know, she and Jay have worked really seamlessly in making sure that the schools are operating the way that they should and that we are operating within the expectations of the, the various departments of health. So with that, I'll turn it over to you, Laurie.
Thanks, Dave. Yes, I, they did not teach us this in administration school. Pandemic was never part of the curriculum. And so Harry, I don't know if you're teaching in your classes, in your teacher leader classes about how to, how to manage a pandemic, but you might want to add that as a topic with your students. It has been interesting and the, the changes and I like a, you know, we do this. If this happens, we do this. And that's not necessarily how it's been playing out, but we're learning together. And I think everyone's being so patient because we, we are learning and we, we don't know. We don't have all the answers yet and our primary concern, everybody's primary concern is to make sure our students and our staff are safe and our nurses are great to work with. I, I couldn't be happier developing real, a deeper relationship with all of them this year because of COVID. So there have been a lot of not so great things with the pandemic, but I will say there have been a lot of really good things that have been coming out of this opportunity. So I am happy to help out as always wherever I can. So thanks, Dave. I did want to talk tonight though, a little bit about just three of our, three of our programs and just some of the wonderful things that are being provided. So our adult literacy and corrections education, you might say, well, how, how is that functioning given the pandemic? So just like our K through 12 schools, our adult literacy programs have gone to a distance learning model. And they, all of the students in the program are afforded an opportunity to meet with their teacher face to face in a socially distanced mask wearing, just like we're doing with our children in our classrooms in our K-12 settings. They can schedule specific meetings to help and receive support from their teacher. They can sign up for blocks of time. If there are blocks of time, extra time, they can ask. They are all allotted three hours a week. That's usually broken up into two different blocks. They also can meet with their teacher if they're uncomfortable or unable to meet face to face at our, one of our literacy zone locations. They do Google Meet where they do have that one-on-one, one-on-one opportunity to help and receive support for their, their learning. So the students who are on the pathway to the high school equivalency are enrolled in an online platform called Essential Education. So we have, we have programming that we're utilizing to help support their learning. Our English language learners are using two different programs. One call is called Burlington English and one is called Crossroads Cafe. And it helps all of those students develop their language skills and the understanding of the culture, the United States culture, so they become familiar with that as well. The incarcerated students, we are still allowed to be over at the jail facilities, but the students all receive an individualized instructional packet. And then they also, those students are afforded an opportunity to schedule time with the teacher. And that all depends upon the direction of the jail administrators. But it is allowed and they are being supported as much as we have in the past with those instructional packets to help them develop the learning that they need to be successful when they are no longer, no longer incarcerated. The second thing I wanted to talk to you about, last month, I mentioned to you that our instructional services program was offering social emotional learning surveys to all of our districts. And we would administer through the districts, the surveys, we would, we would on our end, collect the data. Tara Karakos' coaches would provide some data analysis and resources and help support the districts with the results from those surveys. And I'm happy to report that was just sent out a couple of weeks ago to all of our superintendents. And we already have two districts who have reached out and said they are interested in doing some of the surveys. There are different surveys. So there was a student survey, there was a staff survey, and there was a parent community survey. And I will be interested to see what some of those results might be as we start administering, helping those districts with those surveys. The next piece that you've heard me mention since last spring, virtual, is that instructional services is doing much with professional learning communities. And they are being well attended. They are being offered again through this fall. We are not having any face-to-face, in-person professional development. All of our professional development is being offered online. And our staff is so cognizant that it is difficult for the district staff to participate, that many of those sessions and our PLCs are being offered during the evening hours. And our coaches are, are offering up and facilitating those discussions. They're having conversations about how to engage students in a hybrid world, how to plan online lessons. And then there is a playbook that they're using. It's called the Distance Learning Playbook. And they, they are, some of those groups are going chapter by chapter through that book to help improve their own online learning opportunities for the children. So really excited about what they're doing. The last thing I wanted to share with you today is that the school library system partnered, ours partnered with seven other BOSEs throughout the state. And today I was able to participate in a small portion of a three-hour professional development opportunity where 127, excuse me, 127 library media specialists from those eight BOSEs had a keynote speaker for an hour. She is well-known in the library media specialist world. And she was talking to them about the importance of referring and referencing back to why they became library media specialists to begin with, even though we're in a different way, a different format of how we're providing services to our children in some, in some schools, that their, their goal and their passion to help students should still rise to the surface. She was very good. I was able to listen for, to her keynote for about a half an hour today. And then the afternoon, after her keynote, which was about an hour long, there was a session with a speaker for just the elementary library media specialists. And the secondary group was meeting with a facilitator and then they swapped. And then the second, the last hour of today, today was with the secondary library media specialist meeting with the speaker. And then the elementary folks had an opportunity to work together. And those were facilitated by one of the BOSEs library system directors. So we, we've been trying very hard to make sure that we're supporting all aspects of our schools to continue the support that's needed for all of our children. So I welcome any questions or any comments.
Well, thank you, Laurie.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Laurie.
So want to move into, into my report and start off by telling you, we, we haven't walked away from what we thought was a very successful start last year to connecting with our component schools on a, on a regular basis. We held off on starting our CSO Advisory Committee schedule as school kicked off. And that was honestly at the request of the component superintendents because things were, were a bit hectic for them. But starting in November, we do have a recurring schedule for these advisory committees to ensure that we stay connected to the districts and understand their thoughts, desires, and priorities around career and technical education in our P-Tech programs. That's one of the committees. Also, BOSEs programs and services, which includes instructional services and, and, and other services, and special and alternative education. Those are our three, three CSO advisory committees for this year. We, we merged instructional services and management services into one group, frankly, because bringing them together over and over was, was proving to be a little problematic. But what we did was we set these up for the first two Tuesdays of every month. And it's a recurring schedule and Jay and Laurie will be, will be participating along with, with me as we talk through the different issues with, with each of our component chiefs. So pleased to get that moving. That's in addition to our regular monthly meetings. And I think I've mentioned to the board before, what we, we've become a little more nimble in bringing our superintendents together. For instance, I concluded two days of DS meetings on Monday and Tuesday and feel like there's some information that the chiefs need that shouldn't wait until the middle of November. So we've scheduled a quick WebEx for tomorrow morning at 8:30 where, where I can get them, the, the updates a little, little quicker than, than normal, two of which are listed as my next items. These are two of just a, a list of, of items that I'll be talking to the chiefs about tomorrow. Substantial equivalency, you may recall that being in the news last year in particular over some of the objections from the yeshiva schools downstate, where what substantial equivalency talks about is that, that private parochial schools must provide an education that's, that's substantially equivalent to a public school education in New York. That was put on the back burner last year. It was, it was, it was certainly an emotional topic. And then COVID hit, it is back at the forefront. And much like the graduation matters meetings that occurred last year, there are going to be six regional meetings around the state. When I say around the state, they'll be conducted regionally, but through WebEx. It's a significant issue for some of our districts in this area because this includes the Amish and Mennonite schools in addition to, to a handful of parochial schools that we have. And we will be assisting, the Assistant Commissioner Christina Cuthlin, who will be leading this work in connecting with the Amish schools, particularly in, in Montgomery County. There, there are quite a few, as I think you're, you're aware. And we'll be working with them to, to support that work. I'm not sure if, if some of that will be to a, to a certain degree in person, where maybe they come together for the, the, the virtual meeting. But we'll, we'll see what that brings. But I've been in contact with, with Christina and, and I've got contacts for, for the Amish schools, many of whom I'm familiar with from, from my work in Montgomery County. And then just not new news to you, but still continuing the division of budget to project a $15 billion gap in, in this year's state budget. You know, schools won't need to absorb all of that, but certainly a, a portion of it. And much discussion about what the implications will be on schools should some, some relief not appear for New York State and other states from, from the federal level. You know, all eyes are on, on November 3rd and what may happen after that. And, you know, all sorts of scenarios being discussed. But ultimately, while there have been some aid categories that have had some, some holdbacks, you probably remember the, the idea that there were going to be 20% holdbacks in AIDS. That has not happened across the board. But what I will be cautioning our chiefs tomorrow is, is that they need to remain aware that the bulk of their state aid, the biggest state aid payment comes in March. So, so that's where, you know, there, there is time to, to potentially affect the decisions that are made. And we're going to be attempting to, to do that and have, have an impact. So that's just two of the things. I won't go into too much detail on some of the other things. And, and frankly, I may put some things in a Friday report or discuss them with you at a, at a different date. I feel that they should be discussed with the, with the superintendents first, some of the, some of the, the information that, that I deliver to them. The next bullet you can see is to adopt our 2021 org goals. And if I can, if you'll indulge me, I'd just like to project the draft one more time. So. Share there. Get rid of this. So we broke this up into three organizational goal areas with, with some, some specific goals underneath them that myself and our cabinet-level administrators will, will be working on at, at a central, central office, from a central office perspective. But also Jay and Laurie, you will be hearing in, in future reports from them, they're reporting out about how they are supporting these goals with, with their program teams. So the first goal was to expand our relationships with the departments of health in the region to support our school communities and ensure safe learning environments. You certainly have heard a bit about that already. It's, it's ongoing work. And we certainly have expanded our daily interaction anyway with those, with the departments. But, but we'll bring you some, some detailed reports about that. Same holding true for law enforcement agencies in the region, both because some of the new work that, that lies ahead with, with the governor's directive to the local law enforcement agencies to conduct reviews that of, of local policies with community partners and also some of the work that we're doing in the BOSEs of New York around diversity, equity, and inclusion. Goal number two, organizational goal number two was to improve our role as a regional leader and advocate. And goal 2.1 was to build awareness and capacity among those working in our schools and within the HFM region to recognize and mitigate the impacts of implicit bias. Also build the capacity of superintendents and school board leaders to lead their districts effectively and construct and implement a structured mentoring program for early career superintendents. By putting these goals out in front of us, you know, and we can refer back to it, it really does guide our weekly work. We talk about the progress that we're making and the different action plans we're developing beneath each of these goals each week during our, during our executive team. So setting this direction will, will be helpful. And then the last one is to look internally and build efficiencies and effectiveness in our own internal operations with, with an understanding of roles, responsibilities, and our organizational structure. There's been some change over the last 15 months or so. And, and we're going to, we're going to really refine that and, and ensure that we are communicating to those in our organization in a way that there's an understanding of, of how our struck, how our internal structure is built in and how we would like it to operate. And then the last goal was to implement central program administrator communication protocols within all of our departments. Again, we've added some, some layers to our, to our administration shifting responsibilities. And we are going to build communication protocols within them. If there are no further questions about this, I would say, Gene, I would, I would ask that we, we make a motion to adopt the 2020-21 organizational goals. to adopt the 2020-21 organizational goals.
Can I ask the board, someone on the board, to make that motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion or questions? And all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Great. And the next thing, I'm not going to go back in and project the slides. Yes, I will, because it's the subsequent slide. That's not how you do it. So next, we have been talking about the addition to our core beliefs, which was really drawn out of and 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 in a way just a pared-down, summarized, really targeted version of of the statement that the BOSEs of New York had had issued over the summer. And you certainly have seen this statement a few times. The items in black are our existing core beliefs. And the proposal tonight is to act to add the item in blue as one of our core beliefs. So what we are asking is is to adopt that the Hamilton Fulton Montgomery BOSEs believes that actions and policies that intentionally or unintentionally promote cultural biases, exclude any group, or promote institutional racism must be identified and eliminated. So Jean, I would ask for a motion to consider the addition to the HFM BOSEs' core beliefs.
We need a motion to do that?
I move it.
Second?
I've got two.
Okay.
Any further questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
And Jean, I am going to go and I'm going to project the the agenda. I know you've been operating at a at a deficit there so that you can see what I'm what I'm reading or even if you choose to, you know, knock me out of out of your way. I don't want to get in your way here.
I've been missing this agenda, so thank you.
Just let me see. I just have to be deliberate in doing it. There we go. So we've we've made it through all of our reports. And that brings us to a Section 8 personnel. And as has been our practice, we have have moved to adopting a consent agenda to approve the personnel items. So what we would need, Jean, it's it's recommended that the board approve the consent agenda for items A through J in Section 8 of the agenda.
Jean, I'll make the motion. Alan.
The motion's been made. Is there?
Second.
Second?
Yeah.
Any further questions on any of these items? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Okay. So that brings us to the business items. And as has been our practice, we do act on them individually. What I would like to do is is read the recommendation. And I think, Jean, all you need to do is is then ask for the the motion, the second, and discussion, and take the vote. So the Claims Auditor Report, I recommend the board approve the Claims Auditor Report for the period of September 9, 2020 through September 30, 2020.
Need a motion?
Make the motion.
Second?
I'll second it.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Then motion passes.
Okay. Next brings us to the Treasures Report. It's recommended the board accept the Treasures Reports for the periods of August 1, 2020 through August 31, 2020, and September 1, 2020 through September 30, 2020.
Need a motion for the?
So move.
Second?
Second. Alan.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Brings us to C. It's recommended the board approve the July, August, and September extra class reports as submitted.
Motion? Need a motion? Need a second?
Okay, Gus, and we have we have Carmen.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, letter D is items to be declared salvage. It is recommended the board approve the items for salvage as listed on the Chief Financial Officer's memorandum dated October 14, 2020.
Need a motion for this?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Somebody was in one of the emails or texts or whatever with a question about to be able to repurpose these computers.
Yep. So so Gus, I'm not sure if you you all can hear Gus reference the question about if we could repurpose the computers. And I did have that discussion with with Kathy prior to the the board meeting. And really, if you were to look at the years, those, you know, there, and if you look at the column, the years they were purchased, they truly are either obsolete if they operate, but most of them are are not able to operate. I think the newest machine was was a 2016-17 Chromebook. And I think if you know a little bit about Chromebooks.
Sounds noble, but in technology, it's all.
It doesn't work. It doesn't work. So all of these, but but, you know, laptop computers that we bought in 2013 or 2012 aren't aren't something that's going to be to be to be able to be used. But and and unfortunately, we we just don't have a mechanism, even so, to to donate them to the to the children. You know, they'd have to be sold, so. So that was to answer the question. So if there's no further discussion, I think you can take a vote, Jean.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
F, dissolve some extracurricular accounts, extra class accounts. It's recommended the board dissolve the Foothills PTEC Student Government Association, Foothills PTEC Yearbook Club, Agriculture PTEC.
Do you want to report E?
Did I miss E? Oh, I'm sorry. We'll go back to E. Internal audit report, yeah, we better take care of that one. We spent we spent half the meeting on it. Having been received and discussed by the Audit Committee, it's recommended the board accept the 2019-20 Annual Risk Assessment submitted by Internal Auditor Mark Bodett, CPA, Questar Three BOSEs Taking Note of the Chief Financial Officer's Management Response Letters.
I'll make the motion. I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Okay. It is recommended the board dissolve the Foothills PTEC Student Government Association, Foothills PTEC Yearbook Club, Agriculture PTEC Student Government Association, and the Agriculture PTEC Academic Club and transfer all funds into their accounts or in their accounts to the PTEC SGA account.
Need a motion?
So moved.
A second?
A second.
Any further discussion or question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Pursuing to the competitive bidding process, it is recommended that the board accept the RFP extension as noted by the by memorandum from the purchasing official in the following area, and that is for independent audit services.
We need a motion?
I'll make a motion.
A second?
Second.
Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Motion passes.
It is recommended the board accept the Independent Audit Management Letters Response dated October 9, 2020, as prepared by the Chief Financial Officer.
Need a motion? This?
We have we have a motion from John?
Yeah.
Gus, second.
Any further questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
It is recommended the board authorize the district superintendent to renew the Empire MediBlue Freedom PPO plan with Empire Blue Cross to provide health insurance to the HFM BOSEs Medicare-eligible retirees at no rate increase effective January 1, 2021 to December 31, 2021.
I'll make the motion.
Alan?
I'll second it.
Gus?
Any discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
It is recommended the board accept the following grant funds and authorize their suitable appropriation and expenditure pursuant to State Education Department and/or local approvals.
Motion?
I move it.
I'll second it.
Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Okay. Well, this, last week was School School Board Member Recognition Week. And the governor's office issues this proclamation. And rather than read this proclamation, I'll show it to you. And I'll tell you just very succinctly that we are fortunate in in this BOSEs to have a conscientious, responsible, professional board. And and I thank you for your efforts. The three board members that are here had got got a chance to enjoy some cupcakes. But, you know, it's it's a it's another another thing from COVID, another another impact of COVID. When we can't come together, it's hard to have a celebration. But please know that that along with 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 me, the rest of this organization really is fortunate to to have have this board. And the way the way you approach your work, you know, you I use the term conscientious and responsible, and and you can't ask for anything more than that, so thank you. I can go through all the whereas.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So Jean, that moves us down to board reports and comments.
I I think the agenda's not there anymore.
I will project it.
Thank you. Are there any more board member reports or comments at this point? Hearing none? We go to future meetings? Upcoming events and meetings?
Yeah, as as it stands right now, typically because of the 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 short month and the the holiday at the end of the month in November, we we don't have a meeting scheduled for November. I am not anticipating having having to change that. But as as we know, it's a little simpler to do that in the in the world of of WebEx and Zoom. If if the need be, if there's if there's a compelling reason why, I'll make that request. But right now, I think you can you can wait until December for the next meeting.
Sounds good.
Before, uh, do you want to go to executive session?
Yeah, before before we adjourn, I would ask that the that the board entertain a a motion to move into executive session to discuss the employment history of a particular individual.
So move.
I'll make that. Ask someone to make that motion?
We did.
And John moved it and Alan seconded the motion. For those who may, go ahead.
Favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Then we'll be in exec executive session.
And the one person that needs to stay knows he needs to stay, and everyone else can go. And we will come out of executive session. We won't be be doing any business. We will simply adjourn the meeting.